All right, we're going to call the September 16th Murfreesboro City Council meeting to order. We have several different things on our agenda. We're here at the police headquarters, but if you will, bow with me. Father, I thank you for this chance that we get to get, get to come together. Lord, I thank you for those things that you've blessed this community. We pray for those things seen and unseen, those things that are spoken and unspoken. Lord, we continue to pray for the leaders, not only in our country, but our state. Pray that you give us wisdom and you give us guidance to make the decisions that would be fitting to you, that everything that we do will be done in your honor. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The main item that we have today is to talk about the Murfreesboro Electric Department sale proceeds. And I think we've all had the opportunity, Mr. Tindall, to meet with you individually. And so, Mr. Tindall, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, well, a couple of things. We are in a special meeting this time because we had to move from last week, so we're, you'll notice there's no other business on the agenda, so we have to stick to the agenda because of, it is a special meeting, so.
I need to also make the statement that Ms. Kels Harris is pursuant to Governor, the Governor's order, we still are allowed to do remote meetings, and Madeline is on Zoom with us. So, Madeline, glad you're here.
Thank you, Mick.
All right, so with respect to the MED proceeds and how we're going to use that, we've, we've closed on June 30th, received our initial installment from them of about $40 million. And then, we will next, July the 1st, start receiving our installments for the next 15 years. So, there's a couple of decision points that we want to talk about. I know you've had, I sent you a spreadsheet to kind of give you some, some capabilities. We can pull that up and look at it if we need to on, on what it would look like as far as allocating the money towards, and CIP. Well, let me back up. Council, initially, as, as we kind of worked through the, the sale process, I think it was pretty much unanimous with council that we wanted to use the proceeds for CIP. So, that's where we've kind of directed the whole thinking thus far. And so, in building out the model and what we would do in the future, we've kind of focused on using the proceeds for capital investment in, in back into the community, into long-term assets. And we can talk more, more about that if you, if you'd like. But I, but I provided you the model that, that shows a little bit about what may happen if we allocate proceeds each year to CIP and how that might work out. And then, with an objective to holding a balance at the end of, on the 16-year period that we have, where we'll be receiving payments, so that we'll have a balance to move forward. I believe that's what a majority or all of councils discussed so far. So, the question then is, as we build our models to manage the money, what target do we want at the end of 16 years? So, if we could get some, some direction on that right now, we can continue to put that into the models we'll build and how they would work in the future and get a little bit more certainty on that and bring it back to council, they can see what we want, what, what that may look like. Of course, there's variables on that each year, you know, investment returns, what we're allowed to invest in and things like that, that we'll need to, to take a pretty hard look as we go forward. The next question we have for council is, is what, how we, how we want to manage the funds in the process, we want to manage the funds. I sent out council last night a preliminary plan on creation, creation of a committee that has some citizen participation in it, to think about how we manage the funds over a long period of time, if that's, if that's an option that council wants to use. And so, we can certainly talk about that. We'd like to get a little more certainty on that, because once we have that certainty, we can kind of build that out a bit. And what we'll need to do is go back to the comptroller and talk to them in that office about what they will allow us to do as far as investing the funds. And we want to, so we'll, we'll need to build out kind of the structure on how we plan on managing it, so we can take it to them and explain to them what it is we want to do and, and how we want to utilize the funds. So, with that, open discussions, open directions, but really, the two questions are, if we can get to a target amount, that'd be helpful, and helpful in building the models, so it can change over time, but be helpful to, to do that, and then, the structure on how we want to manage it.
Council members. Anyone? Anyone?
I'm going to start. Yeah, whatever. Your kind of main thing, I, I've struggled a little bit.
Can you pull your microphone up?
Yeah. I've struggled a little bit with the, just sort of thinking through this in terms of, it's kind of, seems like one of those things of, I don't know really exactly what's possible. So, without knowing what's possible, I don't, it's hard for me to think through what, what I think the right solutions are, but, so, so maybe my, my take on it would be that, that maybe at this point, with, at this point of the discussion, I, I, you know, maybe we still keep it big picture and just kind of tell where our, you know, what our preferences are and that sort of thing. And, and then, however much detail we want to get into and can get into, I say, we, you know, I'm certainly game to get into that. Just for example, you know, I kind of struggle with the idea of knowing, well, okay, we're going to take X amount and put it, you know, in this type of, an instrument, and then we're going to draw off of that for ordinary, or for our operating income, and then we'll put X amount in that kind of instrument. We want to invest it that, this way and do something completely different with it, because I'm not even 100% sure whether or not those things can be done. And so, I'm, I'm sort of conflicted about that way, but generally, I'll just kind of say that my thought process on it, I think, is still where it was months ago, which is, I think the vast majority of the money needs to be put into a high control. I think what, the terminology we've used is sort of a control mechanism that, you know, puts some kind of, you know, puts some restrictions on the account, not, not, not investment restrictions, but just other restrictions, spending restrictions on the account, and that we are able to invest that in so, in a way that is beyond government bonds and municipal bonds, you know, long-term stuff. And I, and I would say that that, I think in our conversations in the past, has been sort of referenced as a kind of similar to Kristi Houston type of an account. Just, you know, so, I, I think, to me, the vast majority of, of the proceeds should, that's where they should go. I am, however, willing to, to look at some options as far as taking some of the actual dollars from the sale, and I still contend that if we're going to spend some of that in the near term, that, and when I say near term, I just say, I suspect that's something like a, over a five-year period, for example, that, that we use that to maybe parlay into some, some road matching funds, you know, some things like that, where we can get good bang for our buck on those dollars that we're spending. So, not only are we converting those to something that we need to help out with traffic and growth and that sort of thing, but also, because when we come up with cash for those types of things, you know, a lot of times, we get moved forward on the list with T-DOT. And so, you know, and they could match some of it and stuff like that. So, I'm, you know, again, I, I don't know to what degree that we all need to say, you know, do we need to say, here's my dollar figure, or, you know, I don't know if I want to be the first to say that. I will be, but I, I mean, look, my, I guess I really don't mind saying it. In my brain, and this is just being upfront with everybody here, I mean, just in my mind, is just, I've kind of had it in my mind that we'd be taking, you know, 25, 50 million dollars that would not necessarily go to this trust account or something like that and, and, and try to use those dollars to parlay into other, you know, into road projects that we know are critical to the infrastructure of the city. And that basically, the rest of that, we try to put into a, you know, a control account that what I want to try to generate out of it is something that replaces the income that we are getting from MED, and I'd like to see that number be higher than what it was at MED, just from a return on asset standpoint. And then, you know, potentially some other things that we could, you know, dedicate some of those funds to take care of our strategic partnerships and things like that, that we could kind of endow those perhaps. So, just, that's big picture, my thoughts, quick as I, as quick as I can make it for you.
If I could just respond to your, one comment you made, Masilla Lance, and that is in terms of what we can do and what we can't do.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is the best analogy, but we're kind of in like a, which came first, the chicken or the egg situation.
Yeah, that's the, that's the conundrum that I had too, yeah.
Yeah, in, in that we don't, if, if this is something that we're going, a fund, a trust that we're going to keep internal to the city, that's going to have, that's going to require comptroller approval, and our best guidance is, is that we should have, it's better, it, we shouldn't go in there and ask what is possible. We should go in and say, this is what we want to do, and set out a plan in terms of the best plan that we think we can put together and the justification for it.
Right.
And if they say, no, we'll have to go back to the drawing board, but maybe they'll be saying, yes, but, and we need to tweak certain aspects of it. So, I think the goal here is to try to get as sound a plan with guidance from council, so that we can make that the best pitch possible to the comptroller.
And just to add to that, I think right now, what we're looking for is direction on really how to build this out a bit, so we can do things like take it to the comptroller, show the council what it's going to do. So, there's some, that's why the, you know, I try to narrow it down to a couple of decision points, so we can start the process. It's not, it can change, you know, we'll find out information, we'll see some numbers, some projections and things like that, bring it back to council. It can change over time, so we're not looking for anything particularly absolutely definitive, but we do need a starting point. And, and I think Adam's right. I don't think we'll get an answer of what can we do from, they're not, they're, they're just not wired that way. They're not structured that way. It's not the what, it's not what they do. We need to go in and tell them, here's what we want to do, and then I think that they can analyze and measure that, give us feedback, and we can, we can make the changes we need, and bring them back to council. Again, at that point in time, council can decide, you know, what changes we want to make and where we want to go from there, and we can reiterate it until we get to the right, to the right process.
So, so, see if this is clear. The two decision points are a target amount that you want to, I guess, leverage over the 15-year payout of the.
Well, a target amount on what it would be at the end of 16 years, because we've got 15 more payments after that. At the end of 16 years, what kind of amount do we want to target? And we got to make assumptions, we got to assume, you know, certain amount of investment return, things like that. But, and then, and then we can go back and build this, if we want to take something out annually from, from the balance, what's that look like? And it kind of gives us some parameters to work on. That's, that's one, one decision point. And the other decision point is really, how do we want to manage it? Do we want to manage it with an internal, we, you know, sent out a plan with a committee? Do we want to manage it with, you know, sending out to a separate entity? You know, how do we, how do we want to manage that, is the next question.
Craig, can you pull up the models that you showed us? I think that would be helpful if we could see.
So, this is, this is the, the spreadsheet that we sent out that modeled out and is adjustable as far as, sorry, I get used to the mouse here. Adjustable as far as an assumed investment return and, and how much allocation, percentage of allocation and a target amount that we want to, want to reach. So, what you saw in the beginning was the sales proceeds, and this is what it would look like just coming in. This mouse works backwards, Bill. The, what we receive over the period of time, and then, then, you know, the next category is, is the utilization, and there's some charts on here. It's not going to be a touchscreen either, is it? On, just to give some visuals on what it looks like over time as far as the debt, the debt ratios, and, and how it, how it works with different types of models as we go, go forward. And it, it also models in our debt capacity using our current ratios and how we would fit in there. So, for example, in this, the debt capacity, the amount that we have, it's available to, going to debt with, is, is the blue line, and the yellow line is if we don't do any kind of allocation, and use, again, an assumed amount for CIP. You know, CIP is an, is an annual decision based on the needs at any period of time. I don't think we can project over 15, 16 years exactly what the CIP is going to be, so we have to make some assumptions of what it would look like to accomplish the projects we need to, to look at. Of course, that will change over time, investment return will change. So, each year, kind of going back and, and looking at this and making the decisions at that point in time makes some sense. But if we do, and then, and then, the last point is, in this model, what it's built is to use the funds in a couple of different manners. One, to use it to service debt. In other words, reduce the amount on, of expense and, for the debt in the operating, on the operating budget. So, if we use it to, to finance the debt over a period of time, or we just use it to offset dollar-for-dollar on our CIP needs. So, there's a couple of different ways we, we could use the funds, and some of that would be what are interest rates? I mean, right now, interest rates are so low, we've borrowed at such a decent rate, you know, it makes a lot more sense to utilize the funds to service debt, because we can service that debt at a very, a low rate. If rates shoot up, we probably don't want to be in the market. We'll probably use it dollar-for-dollar and just use the allocate, whatever allocation council decides on to pay for the CIP, so we just absorb that much less debt in general fund than we would otherwise would. So, so the model's built both ways. And that's not to say you have to do, make 100% decision either way, you know, to do one way or the other. I mean, there could be advantages to doing things combined, a hybrid of those two uses. Again, that, that goes back to kind of an, what are the variables that are present at that particular time when you, when council makes a decision on CIP for that particular year?
Can you plug in the variable that, I think it's seven and a quarter or something percent that showed where, at the end of the 15-year period, our investment would, based on those assumptions, would remain at the same?
Yeah, so if we, using these investments, are using these assumptions rather, if, if we did seven and a quarter, if we allocated seven and a quarter out of the balance as it comes in every year, and we had an investment return of four, four and a half percent at the end of, of the number here, at the end of the 16 years, we'd have about $258 million left in that, in that balance.
The way I looked at that too, is if you take that 258 and you figure that, you know, we're going to end up, we conservatively figured what we're going to receive back, instead of having tax in lieu of payments from MED, we're now going to get property tax, that all of those assets are back on the roll. And I think, Craig, y'all were saying that we figured conservatively, we thought that number would be around 2 million originally.
Yeah, about 1.8, yeah.
But we think that number's going to be much closer to 3 million than it is.
It, it could be. I mean, the assets have never been valued, they've never been assessed rather, and so, we don't know what it is. We use book value, which are depreciated assets, so if they assess them at fair market value, we'd have to wait for the assessor to come, come in with those numbers.
But if, you know, if you take that number of the 258, and then you add back, just say conservatively that we're getting 2 million back over a 15-year period, that we get back from Middle Tennessee Electric, that's another 30 million. And then, what I did on there is ran the pro forma where you add how much we would save in debt service by utilizing those, those, you may have that.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I added that from the, I, I did, we, I did continue to work on this since I sent it to you, but the debt service reduction from no allocation at all. So, if we, if we just leveraged it versus the offset, you know, we'd decrease our debt service, the amount that the operating budget would have to carry by 22%. And if you vary this number, obviously, it'll, it'll go up.
What are the taxable assets of Middle Tennessee Electric that are coming back on the rolls? Because the property is, we're still maintaining, so what is the, what are their assets that's coming back on?
It's all the lines, it's all the, the transformers, substations. I mean, there, what, there were 10, 11 substations. There's a fairly large parcels of property with, you know, some pretty expensive equipment on it.
But the property that they're, the office building's on is not, that's, that's still not.
Yeah, that, that won't be, that won't be taxable, because we, we maintained ownership of that.
But, but that relative to the other assets, that's, it's small, I mean, it's not an insignificant portion, but it's a small portion.
Yeah.
My thought, after going through this, is to keep the total at the end of 15 years same as what it would be as we initially got, and then you're able to leverage that money that you've got to be able to use those funds for CIP projects, specifically transportation that we need massive help with. And then, you've got, we can't really count the funds that we've got, that we were getting from MED, because those go into the operating budget, our general fund already that we're, we're using. But we would be able to account for what we're not spending in debt service or what we, we're able to, to pay down, so. And then, the other thing, I do like, I do like the opportunity of having a citizen board, very similar to what we have with the pension commission, because that's gone really well to have, I mean, basically, our pension commission is all financial people who are on there. And then, you know, if, if, then they can bring recommendations back to the city council on funding strategies, just like our pension commission does. So, that, that's, that models work well for, for our pension.
And it was really the basis for the, the plan and policy that was sent out was really modeled on what we did on the pension commission, or committee, I guess it is, pension committee, to set up a, a plan for the CIP supplemental fund. Same type of, of structure.
I'll just kind of weigh in, because I may have a different perspective on this. And Craig, obviously, you've done a tremendous amount of work. It was very helpful to me to go through the exercise that we went through related to what could be, based on, you know, what we thought we might have 15 years from now. I think that's a great exercise, and, and I think you did get a great representation of that. As I was looking through kind of what you sent last night, or the day before, for the CIP supplemental plan and policies, and kind of thought through the ongoing narrative, which may be the council's narrative, but it, it was not mine, that the proceeds for CIP, the proceeds for the sale of MED would be used for CIP. So, that was really never my narrative. I, I know we've got some needs. I'd certainly be open to funding some of those things. It's not like I'm against funding some of those things. And the mayor talked about roads, and Rick's talked about roads. I think we all know that's something that could be improved. I would certainly be in support of using some of the money for that. I would probably be a, this may be the banker in me, but I would be an advocate also for levering the money. I think that makes a ton of sense. We've talked a lot about what it means, the power of going to the state and, you know, setting a stack of cash on the table to say, hey, we want to advance this project forward, or whatever that may be. So, I don't want what I'm going to say next to indicate that I would not be for that. I think, I think I'd have to have some additional conversation about what those numbers look like. But I probably have a little different vision in the sense that, you know, you created this document on how we would manage the, the CIP funds, if you would. What I know about that in my short time of government is that that can be changed, and could be changed over and over and over again. And so, whatever we decided here with this group, with the knowledge of why we thought it made sense to sell that asset, and why we thought it made sense to invest in CIP, you know, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 50 years from now, that knowledge may be lost, and these funds may be lost. This, this thing could go through multiple iterations related to priorities change. I think, you know, what we just went through with COVID, that didn't turn out exactly the way we thought from a sales tax standpoint. I know we don't have an audited statement yet on that, we may have it, but I think we were very surprised how different that looked than what we were fearful of, especially knowing hotels and motels are still probably at 50% capacity, you know, at best. So, and then I think about the tax increase we had two years ago, you know? All of us have talked through that, and I think there's been some conversation about maybe looking back, we should have done this, or we thought maybe it might have been good to do that earlier, but we didn't. There's not anything you can do about that. And so, I could see future councils, future city managers talking about, hey, we've got this issue, this crisis in our economy that's a, a revenue crisis. We had this plan for these CIP funds, it's sensible to change that. I can also see an issue where we say, hey, for some of the same reasons potentially that we, the, the CIP backlog was created originally that we had, that, hey, we hadn't figured that out yet, and so, we can solve it now. But 20 years from now, we have the exact same problem without MED funds to potentially solve it. I know what we're talking about might preserve some of those, but we don't have long-term control over that. And so, probably my vision would be closer to getting this money out of our hands and getting it into a foundation's hands, setting that up to where it certainly benefits the city. I don't know how to do that, that's not what I do, day in and day out, so I don't know that, you know, that councils wish if we were to do that or look at that, do we have 50, 60, 70, 80, 90, 95% of those funds coming back to the council? Are they all used for CIP? I think, I think those are good conversations to have, but I'm just not sure, for me, that I'd be comfortable saying, we're going to be in control of this money for the next 15 years, and, and something won't happen during that period of time that would change the decision that we're making today. Again, we'd all be responsible for that, just like we, the future group would be responsible for it. But the only way I would know to protect it is to get it out of our hands and to get it in a place where there's an independent group that has, is bound by however we set a foundation up to operate under those terms. And so, you know, my, my interest would be in seeing us spend time, spend resources to vet that out, to try to, you know, spent some time the past few weeks talking to folks at Kristi Houston. You know, that money turned into, it was what started at 40 million dollars is now 90 million dollars. And in addition to that, they've given out over 110 million dollars in funds during a 30-year period. That's a really powerful thing, and I think about, you know, strategically, are there things in our strategic partnerships that we could offload to this? We could say, we've had a lot of discussion about, you know, we're going to invest where strategically it makes sense. Do we put that in the category of the new foundation? We take that out of the operating budget. So, not only do we get a couple million dollars from assets from Middle Tennessee Electric being on the tax rolls, but we get some operating relief, because we shift that portion to this foundation, because we get out of some of that business. We let them, the, the, the foundation, so to speak, fund some priorities that might be outside of the CIP, that might be outside of political realm, that could just be community-focused for the city. So, you know, I don't want to take up a whole lot of time, but, you know, my vision would be towards that. And, you know, I would still hope that the money would grow. I think, I think if we had someone managing it, you know, we set up some rules where you have a outside investment advisors, not local investment advisors doing that, you have independent board members outside of political, you know, outside of politics, which I think is probably good. But my interest would be what this money looks like 50 years from now, not, not to sacrifice needs we have today. Obviously, I'd be open to that, or, you know, some hybrid of that. So, that's, those are my thoughts.
I actually tend to agree with Rick and Ronnie. A Kristi Houston-type foundation that, with constraints on how the money's used, that way, just like Ronnie just said, turn 40 million dollars into really 200 million dollars, because 90 million at the bank, 110 given out, that, that's kind of where I was at the two.
One of the things, so, you know, it's going to make this difficult, especially with seven people starting this process, is, you know, I, when I sit across from people and talk about a trust of some sort, you know, and trying to manage things for their futures, for their families and stuff like that, you know, I mean, one of the first things I say to them is, you know, it's a, you're starting with a blank piece of paper. And it's kind of, I guess it kind of makes a lot of sense for what Adam said, is, you know, we start with a blank piece of paper, and this family starts writing stuff down as far as what they want to have happen, how they want their money invested and all that kind of stuff, and this is what I'd like to achieve, and then it's up to some attorneys to go in and try to draw that up and make sure it's all legal. you know, it's a, you're starting with a blank piece of paper. And it's kind of, I guess it kind of makes a lot of sense for what Adam said is, you know, we start with a blank piece of paper and this family starts writing stuff down as far as what they want to have happen, how they want their money invested and all that kind of stuff. And this is what I'd like to achieve. And then it's up to some attorneys to go in and try to draw that up and make sure it's all legal, right? That's hard enough with a, a husband and a wife, much less a board of seven of us. You know, I've struggled a little bit with the idea of, you know, how do we get this? And I know Craig's worked pretty hard and thought through a lot because we talked about this when we, when we met a couple, a few weeks ago, whenever that was about this. That, you know, trying to, trying to get this into a format where you kind of have some specific questions, you know? What are the bogies you want to hit, right? You know, what is the control bogey look like? What is the income number? I mean, one of the things, cou- couple of things that I, that I think I mentioned and, and I, in our meeting and, and I'll kind of throw it out there to you. So one of the things that's always been really important to me, I mentioned a second ago, and maybe I'll just put it in, in terms of this. You know, having that replacement of the operating income that we used to get from the pilot. You know, to me, one of the big, big factors for the MED sale for me was the ROA. Just the return on that asset to me seemed to be extremely low. You know, you've got an asset that's worth $250 million or whatever, and we're only really seeing 3 million from that asset. That's just not a very good return on probably our biggest asset. And so I, you know, for me, one of the real important parts for me has always been a way to see how can we benefit our current budget from this? And so, you know, whatever we're talking about in terms of putting this over into a foundation or a trust or, or whatever, you know, one of my big desires is to see, you know, a number come back into our operating budget. Okay? So there may be a portion of this that goes to grants and things like that for community folks, but, you know, fact of the matter is, a year ago, we were getting $3 million a year, well rounded numbers. We're getting $3 million a year to our operating budget. The council has always had an unrestricted use of that. We use that however we want to. That's just part of our operating budget. And we never talked about, well, here's the money from MED and we need to treat it differently. No, it was just $3 million revenue that we had that lumped into our budget. And so in my mind, it, it may be oversimplified, but you know, what I was trying to do is say, well, how can we take this same asset? And for example, if we have $200 million in this trust and we're able to draw 4% of that out and on a big, you know, and this is an extreme example, you know, that's 8 million bucks to, to, to our operating budget. Now, again, how much money do we borrow and go pay for CIP or go pay for salaries or, you know, whatever? We've never talked about that before with the pilot money. And, and so for me, I guess what I will say is one of the very important things is to see that number go up from where it's been. So whatever we have to do, I'd like to see there be a component of money coming back to the operating budget from whatever structure we have. I guess maybe that's a, I, I can put that in the form of, maybe that's a question for the council. Do other people feel the same way? Do we need to go down that road?
I like the idea of just saying the initial investment should remain untouched. And whatever that that makes on a yearly basis, then that goes, you know, back to the council for the council to determine how they want to use that in the operating budget, just like what you're saying, whether it's to salaries or to CIP or to whatever. My only concern with, you know, I don't disagree with the foundation part. That's why I like the idea of having a community board that the council votes on to put that money in there. I really don't think the, this was not my intent of selling a performing asset to start getting into discussion of outside agencies of, you know, you've got, we all know who've sat on the council for a lot of years about what it's like whenever we start having outside agencies come in and, you know, hey, I want $2,500 here and $2,500 there. And then, you know, a council member says, well, I want to up this one to $10,000. And as we all sit here, no one wants to, to, to go, say no to a council member. So I just hate for us to get into a discussion on, that's why I thought, no one argues that we don't need to take funds and build roads. I mean, you know, that's, I got an email from, I think Sean got the same email this morning from a MTSU professor that said it took him 42 minutes to go over to the Kason Lane area from MTSU. He averaged it out. It was, he averaged six miles an hour, you know, to go seven miles. So that's why I thought that, you know, if the council has the decision on how they're going to fund that, we say, look, that money's going to stay in there for an internal trust. And then we can make the decision on, you know, who, who wants to sit on that board. The thing I just hate is if we, once that money goes away and it goes into a foundation, you can put those parameters in there, but that'll be really hard to unwind that, you know, 15, 20 years down the road. If there are challenges that we don't know about that a council does need to say, hey, we need to shift on the fly, you know? If, so I, I like the hybrid of exactly what you just said of, of doing that and replacing that income.
But one of, and, and again, I, I, I'm, you know, I, I don't really have in my mind exactly what mechanism gets us there, you know? I didn't, I kind of left that out of that discussion on purpose. So, you know, I, I'm just trying, trying to kind of lay out some things that we can decide, okay, are these things that we agree on? I mean, kind of this idea of, okay, if we want to replace some of the operating income as a group, okay, how much? Do we just want to get exactly the same amount? Or do we want to try to increase that number? And if so, how, by how much? I mean, what, what was the math on the tax rate? And I, I, as far as like for every 10 cents, was it how many millions of dollars?
A million bucks for every 10 cents. It's what we talked about.
I thought there was a four cents for some kind of some number.
For which, tell me again.
On the tax rate, cents. Yeah, like, I guess what I'm trying to get at here is, okay, look, so if we, if we used to get 3 million, now we're going to say, let's say we're going to get two from Milton C. Property Taxes. And if we set this thing up to where we say, hey, look, we want to go from 3 million to 6 million. Just, again, I'm not trying to suggest necessarily, that would probably make me happy, but let's just say we set it up and everybody agreed, yeah, man, we'd just like to see our operating number go from 3 million to 6 million. All right. Well, how, how much does $3 million save us in tax rate? I mean, or, or, you know, and, and whether that's a, you know, we don't have to talk about in terms of reduction in tax rate or in terms of a future, you know, the, the lack of necessity to raise them in the future because of this decision, right? I mean, in either case, it's worth whatever that number is. It's probably more like five or, I think it's probably more like five or six cents of, in a tax rate, but I can't, I can't remember.
Looks like seven, but.
Okay, yeah, it's probably, I, I thought it wasn't that, because it's, because I think I remember our number being at, at 30 some odd cents. It was about 16 million dollars. So, anyway, I think you're probably right. It's probably about, you know, so look, that's a.
So I guess the first question is, is, and I'm going to say, the question is, at the end of 15 years, does everyone, what does everyone want the investment to be? More? The same or less? So do we want it to be that 250? Eight, yeah, 250.
Well, the deal's 302.
Back, but back the interest that we're getting out.
Oh.
Here's what I have to kind of think about. Let, let's think about it this way. If we get, if it's at 250, 250 million dollars, let's just use that as our good.
242.
That's close enough. And we have to take, and there's going to be a 4%, you know, typically most of those types of accounts, you're taking a 5% distribution. I think what Christie Houston's got is 1% going to expenses or something like that. And they, they end up granting out 4%. So let's just say we have expenses on this thing that are similar. You got four, 4% coming on 250 million dollars, it's going to be 10 million bucks, isn't it? Yeah. So that's, so, so can we get to, can we get to three plus out of 10? Then yeah, I mean, then if it's the same, I'm good.
You got to take into account too, that say the original purchase price at that 250, 250 million, we're also bringing in over a 15-year period, an additional 52 million in interest. So we've got an additional 4 million a year in interest income on top of the 2 million that we got right now.
We're at six then.
Would be at, rough conservative numbers, we'd be at 6 million a year going into operating if we left it at that 242.
Some of this is just going to be sort of semantics or logistics as far as how this happens, you know? Like, do you take the, does the entire value of the, of the asset, the promissory note and the cash that we've gotten so far and any cash that we get, is it just the cash that we've actually gotten from the promissory note? Or is it the, the note plus? Because that would help, that would matter to how we, how the calculation is made on the distribution. You see what I'm saying? Like.
Can we break out the money at the end of every, when they pay their payment? Can you break out what's principal and what's interest?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can do that. But what I'm, what I'm saying is, for this example's sake, okay, just to, for this example's sake, if we said, if the council decided, actually, you know what we want to do? We want to put every bit of it into a trust or foundation, whatever you want, whatever it is. We want to, the promissory note goes in, the cash that we've gotten, everything goes in and it's, we're assigning it away. Okay? Well, of course, 4% is going to be 4% of that number. And so it's treated as a distribution. If we, in, in another way to logistically do it would be to say, okay, well, we've only got some cash right now. And we've got this note out here that's going to come to us over 15 years. And so we take the cash that we've got and we go ahead and put it into this foundation. And then every time we get this distribution from the note, that cash just gets swept straight into the trust. Okay? And so at that time though, our year one distribution would be, you know, substantially lower. It would only be 4% of what's in there in year one. But of course then we could just take part, you know, 4 million and take it out as a distribution and only put 13 million in the trust. So I mean, we can do it either way. It's just a matter of how you, how you get to what number we get to every year. Sort of while I was going down that road of, you know, if we agree that we want to replace that operating income, we might be able to back into, okay, well, if we get to, if we, if we say we want that number to be 6 million bucks, okay, just, okay, so that means we need, we just want to get 4 million in operating income. Plus the two from the property taxes. Okay? So we get our total number of six. All right, well then, let's run that out. And I think that we'll see with a four and a half percent return that the number would actually be bigger. Which leads me to another idea here. I'm going to go ahead and throw it out early. But here, I mean, this is, this is something for everybody to think about. I mean, you know, look, we, I think there are different levels of control we can put into play here, i.e. And, and look, this gets difficult for us to all know what each other are talking about and all that kind of stuff because it's hard to articulate all this stuff. But, you know, let's just say if we had full-on handcuffs, by golly, nobody can ever touch this money. Well, you know, maybe we could say, all right, we want X amount of dollars to go like that. Foundation, outside organization. Nobody, no city ever, no, you know, city council person ever has anything else to do with it other than maybe they approve what the grants are or something at the end of the year, you know? And then there could be another level of control that may be, hey, look, if something unforeseen comes down the road 15 or 20 years from now, we have a chunk in that. But at the end, what are we trying to achieve for the city? You know, I mean, so I, I'm just throwing out there. Then it's possible there could be varying levels of control. And we could separate this into more than just kind of a binary decision of we either do this or we do this, is all I'm throwing out there for everybody to think about.
So I, I did, just in the spirit of the conversation, I, I was inspired by Craig's work. And so I went back and started from scratch and said, hey, if this were Ronnie Martin's money, what would I do? Right? So I'll never see this kind of money. But if I did, what would I do? And so I said, okay, I've got this much cash. I've got an annuity payment, basically, that's coming in. If I form a foundation, let's call it MED Foundation, just for lack of a better word. And so, since that's where the proceeds came from. And I can earn 6% a year because we're not restricted to the government limitations that we have because it's outside. And I predict a 6% return a year on the money, on average, historically. Can we get that? The numbers I was looking at, you could distribute about, on average, about 12 million bucks a year. So to what Rick's talking about, we got $2 million in asset value of the assets coming in. You could take half that at 6 million bucks and you've blown that out of the water. You've still got another $6 million that's coming in. And at the end of 15 years, there was a couple hundred million dollars in that. As we're doing 12 million dollars a year distributions, with rates being at 40 or 50 basis points, you lever that money today because rates are low? I think you could accomplish the same thing and still have 200 million dollars. You know, we're talking about trying to get to a number. But again, the thing I want to emphasize and it gets, it may just be important to me. You know, we've had conversations about this manager, this council member, this budget process, this whatever. We didn't know we made a mistake, made a mistake hindsight. Those things are going to continue to happen. We may act like they're not, but people are going to continue to make mistakes. I don't want to lose control of the money because, you know, the first thing I think, well, I can do this better than them. They're going to do something I don't want them to do. Right? Rick's going to do something I don't want him to do. But, but the other piece of that is we can say, we did everything we could do to set Murfreesboro up long-term. Not, not saying not fund the CIP. I'm not saying not invest that. But I think, I don't know, it would be time and money well spent to hire somebody to say, we'd like to say, and the council can decide, 80% of the money that comes off, 80% of that 12 million bucks that comes off, by bylaws, by the setting up of the foundation has to come to the city of Murfreesboro. And then the council decided how you want to spend it.
Could, could you, Craig, this is a, going on that route. Could you put something, or could we pass an ordinance that said this is what the intent of this money is? Or Adam asking this, but then we could say, once we determine what the fund is, that we don't want that to go below, that it would have to go to a referendum to ever be able to, to do something with that money? And that way, if we said, if we said, we don't want that investment to ever get below 250 million dollars without a referendum approved by the citizens of Murfreesboro to be able to use those funds. And then the council could, you know, the council could use those funds for operating or, you know, 15 years from now, if they want to use them for grants, or they want to use it if they have a COVID event and they want to use it to buy fire trucks, they can use it for whatever. But that 250 million dollars investment could, or whatever that number is that we say, that could never change without going to a referendum that the entire, that the citizens of Murfreesboro voted to do that.
Well, I'll let Adam can address the ability to do a referendum. I will say as a practical matter of the referendum, that the practicality is to, to pull off a referendum, it, it takes a long period of time. So if there's an emergency need for the money, you're not going to get it because you got to put together an election, you got to put it out there. And it's pretty expensive to get there because it'll take, cost a lot of money to run an election. So you have those two barriers as a practical matter, even if you could do it legally, which I'll leave to.
I think there is a way that you could do it legally. Under the charter, the city council has fully put any, at their own discretion, put any ordinance to a referendum. And so I think implicit in that is if, if you wanted to adopt an ordinance that said, you know, this, this ordinance, you know, we can vote if it's by referendum, you can do that. I, I share Craig's concerns about, you know, if, if, if it's part of long-term planning, then you can, you can work or you can deal with the time that it takes to, you know, have that vote.
I don't think, listening to council members, I don't think anyone wants to go below what that initial asset is. Does anyone want, at the end of 15 years, for there to be any less than 200, than what we originally had? I don't, I don't, and then, and then I think Ronnie, listening to you and Rick both, it, it sounds like, you know, not, I, I don't want to use the term not allowing future councils to make mistakes because Lord knows that we can look at decisions we've made and say that we made mistakes. But at the same time, we are a, the form of government that we have is based upon elected individuals making those decisions. And, you know, I mean, there are people who thought 25 years ago that the avenue in the gateway was a mistake. And now, you know, we see, see where that is. So if we did put something moralizing, hey, if you want to do it, citizens of Murfreesboro got to vote for it. You know, if the citizens of Murfreesboro vote that they want to get into that 250 million, then that's their choice. I mean, the only thing I, and I, I'm not saying I don't know enough about a foundation to not go with that. I just hate that you would have a group of people who are non-elected and that don't answer to the voters that would be responsible for managing those funds. And I'm sure the council could kick people or. And I'm sure the council could kick people or do whatever, but, you know, I guess just at my core, I think this is not a foundation or the city's money. This is the people's money that they own that asset. And, you know, at the end of the day, if we give them the ability to change that, they can change it.
One of the things we need to make sure we're careful of as, as it relates to, um, when we're talking about the, yeah, let me tell you this real quick, because this is, this is just real quick, Madeline. We need to be careful about, um, the idea of how we say we never want it to get below 250 million dollars, for example, okay?
Yeah.
I mean, because if you think about, if we're going to have this in long-term investments, there's going to be kind of ebbs and flows here. And, and you know, you gotta be careful about how you say something. If you say, well, it never goes below 250 million dollars, well, you know, the, if you start with 250 million dollars, it's going to either be above or below 250 million dollars every day for a while as the market moves and things like that, you know, I mean, interest rates change, all those kinds of things.
I think Shane was saying to, to voluntarily take it over 250, not, not to have my flow of the market.
Well, and, and I guess what, all I'm saying is we just have to be careful about how we word it is what my point is, okay? Sorry, Madeline, go ahead.
No, no, that's fine. Every once in a while, Mayor, I kind of hear every other word you're saying. But in listening to everyone's comment, I think they all have been great. This is the first time that I can remember that I've been in the position, uh, on the council to reach out and to help, you know, our, I would say because of the virus and different other things, to help our unhealthy community become more healthy. And I personally believe it can be through the found, through a foundation. For example, uh, this will help the group that's actually in need, I think, well, first of all, our citizens, uh, will help them to invest their money. Because, you know, people a lot put money into their electric bills and et cetera, but that's not the point I'm trying to make. This foundation will help the people who actually paved the way and made Murfreesboro what it is. For example, it could help the small businesses here in our town with a foundation. It can also help affordable housing and a lot of other things, mental health. All of these things are really growing concern in our community. And, you know, we'll always have these road projects and like, um, Ronnie said, the CIP can change, you know, daily. But I think it'll give us an opportunity to reach out and touch people more and more through our funds. And also, um, as far as the group Ronnie talked about forming, these would be part of a group that really helped pay on these rates. So I think it's important, that's an important group also. That's just my take on what I've heard so far.
All right, so Craig, you've heard 15 years. The investment at a minimum should be at what the original investment is. And that's not including interest expense, just the initial asset, 240, 242 million, whatever it is. All right, so council members, do we, we got to give them something to allow them to start building, to build in this? So if we say that we're, we're anticipating 2 million from Middle Tennessee Electric on property tax? And then we've got 4 million coming in? And that's going to be, that 4 million's going to be pretty fixed, correct? I mean, the amortization as the balance goes down, that'll, that'll change some.
Right, yeah.
But, so if we budget conservative, conservatively, if we budgeted 3 million, so you got five that would come in, how much more do we want to see on top of that five come to the, come back to the operating budget? Ronnie, you had figured 12, but is there a number in between?
That was just the number that, over a 15-year period, it could be dispersed on average, based on the annuity payment and using a 6% earnings rate. But my stuff's not sophisticated as Craig's, so.
No, it, yeah, 6% that, I mean, I used four and a quarter, four, four and a half here. Trying to be conservative on it, but 6% would probably put it quite a bit back.
I honestly, just me personally, um, I, I feel less, I guess strongly about that number than I do making sure 200 million, 250 million is going to be here 15 years from now.
Yeah, I agree.
That's what I care about. And so we could debate the value of having 6 million or 8 million or 10 million. We can debate, you know, and I don't know what Ms. Jackson would think of this, but, you know, I look at it, we talked about, Mayor, you mentioned the pressure of council members and, you know, kind of the challenges of things we get asked for to invest in our community. And, you know, all of those causes have value. You know, nobody wants to be told, you know, your baby's not as pretty as everybody else's. So we're going to fund this baby over here, but not yours. But, um, I see this as an opportunity to shift some of that to someone else and say, hey, you know what? There's money because of the sale of MED. There's money set aside to do some stuff that we're currently doing. We could capture that from an operating budget standpoint. I think that number's a million and six. So factor that in if you want to what we're doing. And potentially have, you know, another, whatever the council decides, million, 2 million, maybe nothing. But that you could pump in and say, let the foundation, hey, you know what? When, when somebody comes to me and says, we need 10,000 or 100,000, or, you know, Madeline's talking about different things like that, small business loans, we're out of that business. Go, the foundation handles that. And it keeps us in a place where we don't have to say yes and no and pick winners and losers. We're saying, this is a group set aside that, you know, if, if we, and I think all of this is dependent upon how we set it up in the beginning. And you're not going to be perfect and you can't think through everything. But trying to do what we can to say, here's the spirit and the intention as written in the bylaws of what's intended to go to the city of Murfreesboro. But that, you know, this is intended to help the citizens of Murfreesboro, the folks that paid for the system. And so it's a way also to leverage that and to say, you know, we're going to unload that one six from us. We're going to put that on the foundation. And everybody else that wants to do something, take it to the foundation. That's not what we do anymore.
So one of the things that I think, you know, to span on what I mentioned earlier about being careful about how we say about what we want to be left and all that kind of stuff is, you know, the idea, just the general math behind, if we take 4% distributions from this money, we, we need to be going into this with the idea that we think that the investment perform, the performance will be at least 4%. And so, so that, you know, that whatever we just, if we're only taking the, the 4% distribution from the money, that whatever we don't choose to just sort of spend is going to still be what it's going to be at the end. And that's a variable number anyway, so we can't, you know, we just don't know what that number will be 15 years from now. But if, so, so what I kind of meant by that is that the, the, the spirit of what we're trying to, of a big part of what we're saying is, hey, look, we think if we just are taking the 4% distribution, that we believe that that's going to leave our number, whatever that number is intact. So I mean, you know, like if we just say, all right, well, we're going to take, if, if the total that comes into us is 300 million dollars over, yeah, it's 290 or whatever the number is, well, just 300 is an easier math. You know, that we take, that we formulate a plan to spend 50 million dollars of that in the next five years on roads or whatever the council decides to spend that on, okay? To try to help out, to kind of catch up some infrastructure, catch up healthy people, whatever the council decides on that, okay? Well, that leaves 250 million bucks. And if all we're doing is taking distributions from that other money, then 250 million should still be here at the end. Now, it may be worth 210 because the asset didn't perform as well, right? And we took, we took out all that money along the way. It may be 300 because the asset performed better, the investments have performed better. So, you know, at the end of the day, whatever we don't decide to spend, if all we do is take a distribution, that's the number that'll be there. I mean, that, that's going to, that's, I think in terms of what we're trying to say at least. So, I mean, look, let me, let me run something out here real quick and y'all, y'all think on this, but this is just something I just sort of, I've thought through this in my middle of the night before, but never put it on paper for people, for you guys or for anybody. But, you know, in this idea of kind of a three-pronged approach on this money, you know, spend it, and I'm going to call it a foundation where it's completely out of the city's hands, it's gone once it's gone. And then the trust. And maybe we'll use the trust as the account that says, okay, look, referendum, you can get to that money. Okay? I mean, you know, if we take, if we take out of this 300 million dollars, we take 100 million bucks and put it in that foundation, it is gone. Okay? 100 million is gone and it's never coming back. You don't, we don't have access to it. It's just like Christie Houston. County doesn't have access to it anymore, right? Unless they apply for a grant. We take 100 million of this dollar, 100 million of those dollars, but perhaps we say 50% of the distribution from that account comes back to the city. 50% of that distribution goes to the community. It's about 2 million bucks to each of us. We take 150 million dollars and we put it in a trust. And in that trust, I'm just using these as different terms so we can sort of separate it. But that, and that trust says, hey, look, the city can get to it if the citizens vote. And they say you can get to it, there's 150 million bucks sitting there if they want to take it out and spend it. But we take the full distribution from that too. The full 4% comes from that. So we're talking 6 million bucks from that. We take 50 million dollars and we spend it. Just like drunken sailors. Not really like drunken sailors, but.
You mean rogues is what you mean.
He might want to backstroke on that.
On really smart stuff.
Right.
Did Lee Scott Broden?
Yeah, no, it was, it was a joke, right? But you know, on stuff that we know that we need and think we need. Maybe we figure out a way to make, you know, to make those good decisions. You know, instead of borrowing, leverage to get the T-dot money, whatever, okay? I mean, something like that to me seems like we've kind of diverted.
But you know, the money's not coming in like what you're saying to distribute it. So the money's not coming in where you can distribute like that. What, what are you talking about?
Well, so, yeah, so I think logistically what you'd have to do is you have to spread it out over time, right? So if, of course, anything that we decide to spend, all right, in the spend bucket, well, you may have to do that over a five-year period. 50 million bucks, there's not 50 million bucks to spend.
Percentage split, you're saying the 40 million dollars that's in the bank now that we split it according to some percentage like?
Not necessarily, not necessarily. So like, I mean, maybe you say, leave the 40 million in and start funding these other things. And then out of the 17 that we get next year, 10 of us getting spent. The other seven is getting split, split between this and this. You know, I, there, there's no, it's just math, you know? So I mean, it, it's, it can be done, it's just semantically, how does it get done, right? I mean, so, and again, I'm just throwing out a, this as a, you know, look, we do something like that. We sort of touched on all the things that we've talked about. We're kind of, to me, this feels sort of happy medium-ish where we got some of it that's just gone, gone. Community, uh, type stuff.
But let's don't use the term gone, gone, that money's still in the community.
Right, right, gone from our, gone from our control and coffers, right? I mean, it's, it's out of our control, out of any city council.
Which in some sense, kind of, some of the conversation that went into the MED sale, some of the controversy.
Had definitely a component to that.
That has a component to it, so the, I, I.
For sure, and, and I agree with Shane though, honestly, I mean, I've gotten really conflicted about this. You know, there's a big part of my gut that tells me, oh yeah, get it out. You know, get it out of control of government body, right? I mean, there's some part of me that sort of initially goes there. But as Shane says, I've been conflicted about it too. Shane says, well, is it better to be in an appointed group of people making that decision? Or is it better for an elected group to be making those decisions, right? At least the elected group has to answer to the.
Well, if you put a caveat that it's got to come by a referendum, then you've got.
Even better then.
You've got to control.
That's right.
I do think we need, I'm sorry, I mean.
No, anyway, I just lay this out, I mean, you know, because something like this, just for, for what it's worth column, okay? You're talking, we got 2 million, 8 million plus there, we got 10 million bucks coming to the city operating budget. I think if my math is right, that was equivalent to about 25%, 25 cent or percent, same, about the same difference last year. Not need to raise taxes down the road. And so, you know, and, and you still have 2 million dollars going to the community each year.
And if the count, and if the staff came in and said, hey, we don't need, you know, it's, it's that watching the office, I don't know if y'all watch the office, but you know, at the end of the year, they had that $3,000 left over and they tried to make a determination whether to give everybody chairs or give everybody a copier. And then Michael, the manager in the office, found out that he got bonus 10% on whatever that they saved. And did you see him wearing a fur coat? So, but if the, if the staff, I mean, I hate just to say, hey, here's 10 million dollars coming into the operating budget, y'all figure out how you're going to spend it. You know, it may be a component that staff says, we're going to pay down 7 million dollars in debt this year. I wouldn't, I mean, that would make no sense now since we're borrowing it, you know, half of a half of, or you know, half of a percent. Or y'all come in and say, look, we need to fund, instead of, instead of having a refunding resolution, you know, on XYZ road project, we're just going to pay cash for the first 5 million dollars of that project because we have the cash. So it may be a mixture of that, that they're able to come to us or recommendations on how they, they spend that money. Because the one thing I, I think we want to be careful with is if, I'm just thinking through this, if, like, right now, I don't think it's an argument that we need, we're, you know, three years ago, we had trouble retaining police officers. We all made the decision on our emergency service providers that we did a 2.5 million dollar pay increase to be able to not lose the 31 employees we lost in that one year. Now, we're, we're seeing that we're having trouble retaining firefighters because, or first responders, I should say, because they can go to other agencies with their, their skillset and make more money to do those things. So the one thing we want to be careful to set councils up in the future is that if you've got 8 or 10 million dollars coming in every year, that all of a sudden, it's something that, hey, we need XYZ this year as opposed to really looking at an overall, uh, you know, we're not, you don't want to make sure that everybody thinks that we're just absolutely rich because we got this other money coming in.
Now, that'll, you know, look, I, the way that I kind of thought about that is that, is we don't think we're rich because we got 3 million dollars coming from MED. It's just always been there since we've always been on council. And so it's not like it's any extra money, you know? I mean, it's just part of our budget, as far as I know at least. I, I don't remember us ever talking about it kind of differently than this. And so I think the first few years of this, I think you're right. It'll be extremely important how we deal with this the first couple of years, that we don't all of a sudden, you know, we don't increase our budget by 10 million dollars because we got the money coming in, right?
One kind of money for continuing expenses.
But, but again, if we think about this in terms of, you know, if we think there's tax raises coming or whatever, I mean, this is the reason I say that. I mean, you know, if you want to get real nasty about it, start talking about tax decreases with the extra money coming in. Then that future council down the road, they got to raise taxes to get to that same money.
We've been there.
You know, yeah, I mean.
Going back to where we were.
You could, I mean, you know, you could take part of that and then, like I said, they don't get to just spend it because it's coming. They got to raise taxes back to, to get to that same level number. I mean, just to.
I like the three-pronged approach, how you got that set up.
I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there for everybody to think about. We got a lot of thinking to do on this, I know.
What was the first one?
I, I just called it kind of a foundation, a trust, and then a spend. That's sort of how I just labeled it.
The trust and the spend would almost be the same.
Well, the trust, you're still putting the money back into an account that has hopefully separate investment restrictions. That's, that's why it's not the same because spending is, it never gets put into a separate fund or trust or whatever you want to call it. It just, when it comes, when we get the check, we spend that part of it. You know?
But it's just the interest you're saying off of that.
That wouldn't be, that, that's, I'm talking about spending principle. But again, if we spend 50 million dollars, that still leaves 250 going into something, which leaves us at 250 million. It's actually spending the interest, the 3.3% interest.
And, and maybe not just.
See what I'm saying?
Okay, okay.
Because we're getting 250 in principle and then another 50-ish in the 3.3% interest that's coming from Middle Tennessee, the promissory note. So really, that's spending that interest on the front end. But that still leaves you, it's not technically how it happens, but, you know, you know, just.
And again, the, how you figure that with the way the distribution of the money's coming is still, I'm not sure, because you're getting, you got 40 million dollars and then 17, whatever it is.
Yeah, per year.
Here.
Yeah.
So how do you fund that trust? What, what goes, what goes into that pot?
So, so I guess if we decided to spend, let's just, let's, let's make it a little bit easier. And we decide to spend 40 million bucks, okay? Well, there's choices we could make. Well, there's choices we could make. We could say, we're gonna spend the 40 million dollars that's already come in, in cash. That's the cash we're gonna spend, and we're spending all of it. We're gonna go build us some roads or whatever it is we choose to do. And then every dollar...
Oh, you're spending for 15 years, is that what you're saying?
No, you spend it now.
Cash at first.
I'm, when I, my spend bucket is a spend it very soon CIP-type expenditures bucket. That's in, this is the way I've got it visioned up here, okay? You got this spend bucket, it's spend soon. If we decide that number's 40 million, well, we can spend it tomorrow because it's in the bank. And then that would mean that every 17 million dollar payment that came in would go to fund the trust and foundation. There would never, it would go directly to those accounts. Or we could say, well, we're gonna spend 20 million of the 40 we've got now, and we're gonna get the other 20 million out over the next two years of distributions. So, you got 17 million in, we gotta take 10 million out of each for two years, and we're spending it.
Well, it's not real, is it realistic to spend 40 million dollars in our CIP?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, no, I, I, you understand what I'm saying. You're not gonna be able to build roads and...
You can do that 750, wasn't it? Chris Gritten could do that today.
Well...
Well, but not, no.
No, no, Bill's right. I mean, we do have to manage, we have to, we have to manage it.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta, that's not realistic to manage that kind of...
You know, the thing I, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not advocating more debt, but it is absolutely insane that we would spend...
I agree.
...cash right now if we can borrow at half of a half.
I agree with that.
We could set that 40 million over like it's on, on revenue bond that we're using to pay the interest expense on it.
Yeah, that, that, so, yeah, cause I...
That makes more sense.
Well, if I, if I could offer this, because i- if we're talking about the, the three different ways that you outlined, and, you know, the foundation kind of has defined itself, I think. You've talked about a trust, um, and I want to be, and it may be just terminology that you're using, but I want to be careful with that, because we could put it in, and Melissa can, and, and Aaron can help me with this, but we can put it in a recount that's restricted with policies and procedures without incorporating trust law, which is something, that's a big step. So, and then, and then the, the income off of those or a portion of whatever, um, but I think what you're talking about is the income that those produce would then flow back into the city for operating purposes. And then Bill's right, we have to, we should manage that on what we can do on any individual year in a, in, in projects. And then the amount that's left can go back into, probably into the, for lack of a better term, what you're calling a trust, that fund, that restricted fund. If we don't use it, then let's invest it, in other words. And then, you know, it will then cycle back, create more income, and then, then come through. So, so we could, we could manage that way. The other thing I want to put on the table and remember, because we're now talking conceptually and relatively speaking, it's not huge amounts, but it is amounts that you'll see every year is every time we, you know, the foundation is gonna take a hit out of there for administrative costs. They gotta pay for themselves. You know, if we do a trust, that's a, if we do a restricted account as opposed to a trust, then we can avoid some of the costs that a trust would have. But there will be administrative costs, and each, each time we take the money that goes out, that will come out of the income that it produces, you hope, if it's producing income. I mean, if the market changes, they could take it out of principal because they're gonna still have to survive as we go through. So, let's not forget about administrative costs that will, will incur, too.
I, the, the main reason why I kind of am calling it a trust...
Yeah.
...instead of just a separate account is because I'm anticipating that we are gonna have to have some other type of an account...
Right.
...in order to get the investment restrictions lifted, okay? So, so...
Right.
You know, that's still, for that amount of money. I mean, frankly, here's what I'll tell you, for, for my purposes, okay? If that, when I'm calling a trust account, if, if we can't achieve the lift of the investment restrictions and we're restricted to only government bonds for that, it kind of blows it up for me.
Yeah.
I mean, I, it's just my, cause I have a whole idea of 4%.
And we can develop, we can develop that kind of as a restricted account, because what we need to do then is to take both of those concepts, put them together, and then take them back to the comptroller to get the answer to the question you're asking for. And whatever that answer is, you know, we'll bring back, and we can revisit the whole issue and see if it makes sense to, to do that or do something else. So, we, we can, we can certainly do that.
One other kind of housekeeping thing, since we talked about a referendum, if we did a trust account, obviously, the investment return is a very big part of that. The other part of that is the referendum piece of being able to change that.
I got it in there, yeah.
But I do think kind of a housekeeping measure, let's talk about, just because I think it's good to talk about it. If we can do that on the trust account in this situation, why we didn't do that for MED to do a referendum, because we're talking about MED proceeds, I think it's important to clarify that for folks that would, inquiring minds that would want to know.
We could do that. I think, I think what we'd like to do also is to come back and talk about referendums. I mean, having, living, lived in a place that has initiatives and referendums, I think you should have a full picture of what that means, because it's easy to talk about. It's hard when it, when it has to be put into effect. And whether we're putting an impediment into future councils on the decisions they may need to make, and the inconsistency of decisions that will tell you that come out of that is something that really needs to be considered a whole lot.
I just warn us to be accountable for what we say, what we do.
Sure. I mean, I can give a brief answer now.
Sure.
And, and a couple, a couple of points. First of all, with respect to the, whether a referendum was mandatory or not with respect to the sale of MED, it was not mandatory because of the statutes pursuant to which city, city council back in the 1930s created MED.
Right.
And they created it under a statute and under the city's own charter that did not require, did not have the language that required a referendum if the assets of the electrical plant, the electrical system were ever sold. With respect to why we didn't simply choose or elect to have a referendum on the decision to sell out of just discretion was that the, this, the only thing that can go to, the only, it has to be legislation that goes to a referendum, and the decision to sell a city asset, whether that's, you know, a, an acre parcel of land or whether it's an entire electrical system, is not a legislative act. It is, it's something that's done on motion or pursuant to a resolution. And so, the city charter only provides that ordinances, so actual law legislation can go to a vote referendum. So, here, if, I think there's ways that you could, we could get to what we're talking about here in different ways, whether it's by a resolution, whether it's by a motion, whether it's by an ordinance. But if we were creating something by ordinance, there is a provision in the charter that would, that in the council's discretion, they could choose to, to put it before the voters of the city.
Thanks, Tim.
Sure.
I just felt like that clarity was good.
And we're talking about referendums, I will tell you that, and I went way too far into government, you know, philosophy, but there is one state in this union who's really taken referendums and initiative to heart, and I'm not sure, there's a lot of other states that would replicate that. It's, um...
We have a lot of people...
Lies on our western border of the country, you know?
It's got a long coastline.
There are a lot of people...
Gaining, gaining a lot from that, that history.
There's a lot of people who are moving from there to here.
There are.
As a matter of fact, I think I, I read an article, the Daily Caller, or Daily...
Yeah.
Yeah, they're...
Daily Wire.
That, daily, yeah, they, they announced they're moving to Middle Tennessee today.
Daily Wire's moving. So, we just, it's, it's a, it's a cautionary tale, perhaps.
All right, so, do, council members, y'all want, what do you need from us, Craig, if we go this three-prong, three-prong approach?
Um, I, I, I think I, I think we have enough to work on. And you guys, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have enough to work from our discussion. I mean, my understanding is we, we pretty much want to keep the, the, the corpus of whatever structure this is in close to or at the initial deal terms, which is about 240 million dollars. And that, from a, from a structural standpoint, we can look at a foundation and what that looks like for all a part of it, and then we can dig into the restricted accounts. And after we form those up, I think our next step would be to, to try and get with the comptroller's office to see where we can go with the investments, and then we can bring it back. That may take a few, a few months.
So, can you recommend us, though, as you bring this back to us, will you recommend, you know, here, here, based upon the assumption that we want to keep this original investment, whatever these three mechanisms, but here's what we would anticipate on a yearly basis that...
Yeah, we can redo, we'll redo and send out, I know you love the spreadsheets, and I sent you some perspective on that.
Disappointed there wasn't a spiraling, uh...
That was, that was Eddie's chart. That was done for Eddie.
That was in motion as I looked at it. It kind of, that was when I, when I looked at it, it kind of looked like, you know that guy's eyes on the cartoon, the jungle? Kind of what my eyes felt like.
I always try and put in colors that you can't see, anyway, so...
Council members, is everybody cool with them coming and bringing that type of model back to us?
Can I make one comment about this?
Don't you go and let me go.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry. I thought you were saying, okay.
No, it's...
Go ahead.
I do think, too, just my perspective, I don't want staff to feel rushed to do this because I don't want to feel rushed to do this. I think this is a really big decision. So, I would encourage you, don't feel pressure to get back something with us in a week or a month. If it takes six months, I'm okay with that. So, I just offer that as my insight, because, I mean, this is a really big decision.
Yeah.
And I want to make sure that we do the best we can to vet it, and we feel really good about what we're doing, and I'm not ready to make a decision in 30 days, so...
Yeah, I was gonna say, it would take us, it would probably take us a few months to get through the comptroller's office and everything to, to get some feedback on that, so...
Well, actually, I was gonna say something sort of similar, but it was kind of just from a different angle as it relates to, you know, if we're gonna come back and revisit the budget sometime in the next 30 days or so, if we're gonna start talking about, you know, we've had a lot of discussions about CIP...
Right.
That could have been CIP from this past CIP versus this next one.
Yeah, we do need to talk about that.
I think, I think as it relates to this, I think this MED money for, for my, for my liking would be that we just forget about this for the, this current CIP year so that we've got time to go through all of these things, you know, like what you're saying. I mean, to, instead of us trying to, instead of us trying to calculate it in, was the only thing I was gonna really mention, because it looks like this might go beyond us trying to plan for using some of the money for this current CIP.
Well, we, we have the flexibility to do that with the market where it's at right now, so it makes it a lot easier.
Yeah, good point.
Unless things change. I mean, between now and, I think the mid-October is when we're gonna come back. I mean, who knows what, what the markets will do? I don't think they're gonna change that much in that period of time.
I think also, too, with COVID-19, it's changed how we look at the big picture now as well. So, we, we have to put everything back on the table when it comes to the CIP now. We gotta really start looking at what we really want in the CIP and what we can take out of the CIP.
Yeah, so, in October, while we're talking about that, we will come back with an update on the numbers that we have at that point in time. We'll bring back CIP, and we also have some of the, what we call the budget supplementals that we'll need to, to take a look at. And the two primary ones probably are, are, are police recruiting, because we, we are falling behind, and it's gonna be hard to catch up. But we need to start trying as quickly as we can. And I think talking about employee salaries and benefits are the two, the two items that we can talk about particularly. There'll be more, but those are the two big ones.
Craig?
Good stuff.
Awesome, great job, everybody. I just want to comment, I, I want to say how much I appreciate our two bankers on our colleagues, it, the, some of the comments that you made today helped clarify some of the things. Craig, I want to thank you and Aaron for the work that you've done to, to get us to this place. This has been a, this is a complicated decision, and like Ronnie said, a very profound decision that can have implications for years to come on our community. And I appreciate all the thought that we're trying to make and, and all the work that's being done. Uh, you know, one of the things that were, was brought up today was the, one of the three prongs that was positioned was the idea that we could relieve ourselves of some of the responsibilities to fund community events and community projects. I, I really like that, because there are some things that are not being done or that are not adequately funded. When we shifted some of the things that Angela's been working on, some things that are just hanging out there, particularly during this, this time, that I think might, this might help to address. And thinking about, you know, out of the box kind of thinking and not just bilateral thinking, when we're just thinking either or, but is there some way to invent something that actually creates something that, that meets the needs of our community? And guys, I, I just really appreciate you, too, and your thoughts that you're bringing to us, and all the conversation from all of council and the work of staff as well. But I thought somebody needed to say that, so...
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron, do you have anything you want to present on the dashboard, or you just want questions?
And just if y'all have any questions.
I've been amazed at how sales tax has not, not dipped, and if anything, has increased. We, we were figuring a 30% decrease, and I think we were up one, what was the total number we were up, Craig, or Aaron?
Well, so far through August, we're up about 5 and 1/2% on local sales tax, and we budgeted to be down 55% for the first quarter, so...
Amazing.
Okay. Well, that goes to show...
You never know.
Yeah. All right, we have two beer permits, Ms. Wright, are they all in order?
They are. They are. Ownership and name changes, they do need to finish up their building codes inspections, but otherwise, they're in order.
Okay, Kurt, can we get a motion?
Second.
Second, Ms. Wright, please go to the room.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris?
Aye.
Well Lance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Do want to make a comment, since we can't really talk about other business, but we were scheduled to have our second meeting on the emergency response, but that's being